So everything. And most of them will just read it themselves. But he wants to read it, so that's his decision. It doesn't matter to us.
Well, sure.
We'll basically just follow along. Again, always Simon's your phone line.
I would like to call a order in the city council meeting for the city of Maplewood for Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. First items is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and that city with all due diligence, one nation, united, and with all the community's trust.
Thank you. Next item is roll call, please.
Councilmember Correll.
Here.
Councilmember Faulkman.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Mayor Formis present.
Thank you. There's no motion, no need to excuse any council members. The next item is the approval of the council agenda. We have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion. Second, is there any discussion? Voice vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. I mean, the agenda has been approved. Next item in part of minutes. And the approval of the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four city council meeting minutes. I need a motion.
Some move to approve. Second.
We have a motion. Second, are there any modifications, changes? They need to say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. The next item is item number seven is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Julius Phillips, a vintage gold eighty-eight to operate a vintage and collectible retail clothing store at seventy-one seventy Manchester Road. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this particular topic? No?
Oh, no.
Okay, so the public hearing is opposed. Item number eight is the public forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council on any matter of importance to the city? I see that we have some scouts out there. Do you have any questions for us which you have a spot? Okay. No one would like to speak at the public forum? Keep in mind after our, after the most meeting, there's a set in public forum that if you do have questions after listening to us, you're welcome to help us with the podium at that point. Item number nine, our announcements.
Taste to Maplewood Friday, Saturday. Show up hungry because there's tons of food and food in the bus gets.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Also, the summer concert series is starting up soon on the fourth, on Wednesday's. First one is, I believe, June twenty-sixth.
And no more announcements. Okay. Item number ten is the, is a planning and zoning commission report by Kevin Sullivan, who is the chair. He'll be approaching the podium here and holding down the button.
I remember doing it the entire time. Thank you, Mayor Greenberg and council members. Kevin Sullivan, the chair of the Plan and Zoning Commission. I provided you kind of a written report, but I'll give an overall overview of it as well with respect to what the commission has been doing since I last made a report to the council in April of twenty twenty-four. One major thing we've been doing is working on revisions of ordinances as well as work with respect to the comprehensive or master plan amendment and update. First, our ordinance review subcommittee drafted an affordable housing set aside ordinance, which the commission recommended with council and which was enacted. As a reminder, that was an ordinance that required that in order for any new multifamily development or redevelopment to receive economic incentives from the city, at least twenty percent of the units in that development would have to be affordable housing. And affordable housing was determined by, the definition of affordable housing units is determined by a formula set forth in the ordinance that took into account three factors, the most important being HUD's median family income for the St. Louis metropolitan area. Second, we had recommended revising the used regulations in the zoning code to allow wheelchair ramps and lifts in yard setbacks and to remove the requirement that X accessibility ramps would have to apply for and receive a permit. And that was likewise revised, enacted by the council. Next, the subcommittee and the commission had worked on an ordinance to provide tax reductions or credits for existing naturally occurring affordable housing in order to encourage the preservation of such housing. Before it could be recommended with council, a legal review determined that such reductions or tax credits were not allowed under Missouri law. One thing that the subcommittee, the ordinance review subcommittee and the commission have been working on is an ordinance that revises, first, well, two things. First, it revises the minimum lot size and the front yard setback standards to more accurate accurately reflect the existing conditions within the city. And the smaller minimum lot size may also encourage the subdivision of lots, if they're large enough, to allow more development. The second aspect of it is to revise the height and bulk requirements in the regulations of single-family homes that if there was a new construction of a single-family home, that it would have to be no more than ten percent above the average square footage of single-family homes within a three hundred-foot diameter. Likewise, an alteration, what's that?
Radius.
Radius or that, yeah, sorry. And likewise, the alteration of an existing family home would be limited to either two hundred and twenty-five square feet or the ten percent of the radius, the three hundred square, three hundred-foot radius, whichever was greater. The in-beams, basements, and attics would not be included within that calculation, so that it would really just be if you were adding on to the existing square footage and footprint. The commission is going to be doing further revisions based on comments from the council and from the public. And we should have that probably to the commission, I mean, to the council within probably the next couple meetings. Finally, we have been reviewing comprehensive master plans from other municipalities in Missouri and outside of Missouri to get an idea of areas of emphasis and what we really want to focus on when we select a firm to help us work on the plan. In that vein, the RFP for firms was sent out for work on the commission. I mean, the comprehensive plan process. And we received responses and proposals. And those are going to be reviewed and discussed by the commission at its next meeting on May twentieth. We would anticipate doing interviews with the firms that have submitted proposals. Finally, we also, the ordinance review subcommittee has met with the Human Services Commission in the past year to update that commission on our activities and to make sure where if there's items that we can coordinate things on or to make sure we're not working against each other, but working with each other. And we'll look forward in the future to both working with the Human Services Committee and maybe other committees and commissions like the Sustainability Commission. And just a breakdown of our standard kind of meat and potatoes meetings. We had nine meetings and two work sessions. A lot of the work was focused on a comprehensive plan. But we've also issued conditional use permits for an office business at the corner of Greenwood and Commonwealth. We did the conditional use permit for Revel Kitchen. We amended the conditional use permit for the side project brewery so that they could add a kitchen facility and revise their storage area to increase storage for kegs. Likewise, we did a, issued a conditional use permit for the auto sale and repair business that is that big bend of Hazel while also addressing some citizens' concerns that were raised. And looking forward, I think within next year, the large, the focus will remain on the comprehensive plan amendment update, which would include working with the council and with others and selecting the firm that will do that and then being involved in that process because we think it's going to be an important process for the city moving forward. Likewise, we'll continue to explore whether there's certain sections of the zoning code, kind of discrete areas that could be amended and updated to address priorities that we have. And this would be, you know, without having to rewrite the entire zoning code, which might be directed by the comprehensive plan that ultimately be amended, updated, and adopted. If there's some areas that we can change to modernize and try to make the city and its planning, I guess, more focused on affordable housing, other priorities and things of that nature. And we likewise have one current opening on the commission. And I understand that's going to be filled, so we're looking forward to working with the new commissioner and more of it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the last planning and zoning meeting was very lively and well attended and the people that have had concerns about the methodology with regards to determining the size of the, that people can build on their property. Yeah, we, you know, we will be doing the comprehensive plan and then at that time we'll have some more empirical information with regards to how that's working. And if it's working, we don't want to overburden the board of adjustment with, you know, on every project, but we'll have a lot more information. So with the comprehensive plan and with the the projects that have gone in front of planning and zoning, in the meantime, we'll be able to make much better decision as to what the final zoning ordinance is going to look like.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that. You know, it's, it's an ordinance that we had have before, but I think will sit well ultimately and hopefully have a positive impact on her, on her neighborhoods. And likewise could, you know, could very well be tweaked or, you know, perhaps different standards could also apply to to different zoning districts within the, within the city.
Yeah, there's no doubt we need a neighborhood preservation act and this is a good start, so. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks. I know in particular, there's a lot of, spend a lot of time outside of meeting homework sessions, doing research and looking on things. So we appreciate that and you guys do a great job. Thank you, council member.
It takes care to thank you, all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So item number eleven is the council interrogate, I mean, interview of our proposed municipal judge appointee. So Mr. Seidel, would you like to come forward and so if there's questions from the council, please direct them to Mr. Seidel.
Thanks, Mr. Seidel. I have a few questions for you. Thanks for coming back and joining us again so that we can have a discussion with you. My first question is related to the class action settlement. As I know you're aware, Maplewood was involved in the class action settlement based on people who were jailed or paid fines and fees between November first, twenty-eleven and November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And part of that time you were the city prosecutor and I was just wondering if you would tell us what role the prosecutor plays in determining fines and fees and what your role was in that context.
If there was an attorney involved in the case, I would make a recommendation to the attorney on what the disposition would be in the event that there was a plea of guilty worked out between myself as the representative of the executive branch of the city and defense counsel. Pro se matters, they generally were addressed by the judge exclusively and fines and conditions of bonds were under the authority of the judge and the judge only. I did not play a role in that.
Thank you. Second question. Can you talk about kind of how you run your courtroom, that you will tell people you have been involved with a crime specifically around indigency motions and how you handle that?
Well, I've been the judge now for three consecutive terms in University City. First, I was appointed to a two-year term, then reappointed and reappointed a second time. I think University City and Maplewood are similar in many ways. They're both progressive communities richly diverse and our court respects that and appreciates it. A person comes before me as the judge, if they're interested in pleading guilty, I will take, I will accept that plea of guilty. We'll then go ahead and have a discussion of what the appropriate consequence is. There always should be some consequence. It doesn't have to be a fine. Certainly doesn't have to be a jail sentence. That's almost never given. But it can be some form of community service. If a person's indigent and they express that and they're willing to go through their income and expenses with me, we come up with the term of hours that we think is appropriate to address what they've done and that will then give them a disincentive from ever engaging in that same conduct again. Because like I said, if there's, you have laws for a reason to promote, to promote civil society. If someone believes that they can just say, I'm indigent and I can't, a fine cannot be imposed against them because they are and they do have safeguards about that. There are other consequences in place. And that's, I always, you know, every case is an individual appearing in front of the judge. And for many people, their appearances in municipal court are the only time they'll ever appear in any courtroom in this country. And so it's very important that people leave with a sense that they were listened to, that they were treated with courtesy and respect. And I learned this many years ago from a judge I really respected. He told me that if a person appears in front of him and argues their case, they may win their case and they may lose their case. But one thing they will never lose in his courtroom was their dignity. I learned from a great, a great person many years ago. I've put that into practice in my own court in University City and I would do the same if I was lucky enough to be confirmed by this council.
Thank you. Final question for me. Can you talk about how you handle conflicts of interest since you're already a U-City mini-judge and if you're serving in Maplewood? But also with your role as a chief trial attorney in St. Louis County? How would you handle interactions with the defendant in a case you're hearing in one of the media courts that might then come into St. Louis County? And how's that process work?
So the process would work if, and this is how it works with University City Police. If the Maplewood came, Maplewood police came to our office saying they have a suspect in a crime of some sort. I make sure that I am walled off from that, so I don't, I don't involve myself in either answering the legal questions or making charging decisions. Reason is that as the judge in this court, I would be sitting in judgment of the credibility of your officers as they testify in front of me down the road. At the same time, I'm not going to then advocate for them in a, in a, in a state of Missouri regime. Remember, the charging authorities in state court are the state Missouri versus an individual. In the municipal court level, they are the city of Maplewood versus individuals, so different charging authorities. However, to keep the conflict, to keep everything very, very clear and divided, I'm walled off from any charging decisions or prosecution decisions of anyone who might appear in front of me as the, as a litigant in this courtroom, as I do in University City, and it's worked without any issues.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us. I just had a kind of logistical question. If you were to be appointed as the Maplewood judge, would you be still maintaining your position for the rest of the term as a U-City judge?
Oh, yes, there are different nights. I would not give up the U-City job.
That makes sense.
City court meets on Wednesday nights, reports are Monday nights. There's no conflict at all. Rule thirty-seven of Missouri Supreme Court rules indicates you can be a judge. You can be up, you can be a judge in anywhere up to five municipalities within the county, so that there's not any form of legal conflict or practical conflict. You may to be in this court and that court as a judge.
I appreciate you anticipating my next question because I was about to say it looks like they're only on Wednesday nights at U-City, so we're good there.
Right.
Thank you.
Good question for you. What is your policy with arraigning prisoners?
I see everyone within, usually within eight hours, usually less. And I live in University City. When a person is arrested, I'm now standing in charge. I'm five minutes from their court where people are held. They have a temporary police headquarters. But I go there, I meet with them in person, find out the explanation for why they missed court or what's happened. I've set a bond. Generally, the bonds can, I talk to the individual what type of bond you can make. We don't hold people very long. And if they're, if they miss court, I explain they missed court. That's why I warrant position for arrestor field to appear. And again, work with them on what bond can you produce? And if you can't produce any, then I talk to them and I say, look, if I give you a second chance, will you come back? This is a me as one person to another person. You promise me you will come back and appear in front of you and answer these charges? And when you talk to somebody like a human being face to face, look them in the eye, they do come back because I'm not just, I don't do it over the phone. If I was in this community, I'm still ten minutes away. I would do the same thing. I think it's very important to have a person-to-person communication with people. And again, we realize the people who appear in the municipal court levels are not hardened criminals. These are generally very, very low level, more nuisances to society, not menaces to society. And as such, everybody, we're all works in progress. Often, young people can turn their lives around and, but they need to know that there's still somebody, that there is a consequence to actions. But locking people up and holding them is not the answer, at least at the municipal court level. We don't have murderers here, things like that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any questions for us?
No, I feel like I'm home.
Would you like to introduce your, your associate?
Yes, this is Jeffrey Bach. I work with Jeff. He's a really great attorney. He's a very competent, ethical person. He currently works on our domestic violence team handling those very important cases. I, he's, he has worked with me on some murder cases and he's just absolute first rate. And what I would recommend is that he be my provisional judge in the event that I'm, God forbid, sick or whatever, can't make it. Jeff would be able to fill in for me. He has the same credentials and qualifications that I have. And I
Do you have the same ability, the same availability, Mr. Puck?
Yes.
Do you live close like he does?
So I'm not very far off.
Even better.
Yes.
Well, if there's no additional questions, then we'll move on to item number twelve, which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting Douglas Seidel as municipal judge and Jeffrey Park and Stephen O'Brien as provisional municipal judges of the Associate Circuit Court Municipal Division of the city of Maplewood, Missouri.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion. The second, is there any discussions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkman.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eighteen is approved.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, to accept the bid of Spencer Contracting in the amount of eight hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars for street and sidewalk reconstruction with contingency of ten percent or eighty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars for a total of nine hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion. The second, are there any questions or discussions about this resolution? That case roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Faulkman.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash nineteen is approved.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Julius Phillips, a vintage gold eighty-eight to operate a vintage and collectible retail clothing store at seventy-one seventy Manchester Road.
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
We have a motion. The second, is there discussion?
Good question for it. Amber, you talk to me pretty comfortable that it's not going to be a thrift store or selling antiques.
Yeah, correct. It will be a vintage and collectible store.
He's well aware of all the, the rules and the definitions. He even brought in sample items to the planning commission to, to show what type of items he would sell. We've made it very clear.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm excited for that walk to get something new.
Any other discussion?
That's great.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading. An ordinance of the city councils, of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Julius Phillips, a vintage gold eighty-eight to operate a vintage and collectible retail clothing store at seventy-one seventy Manchester Road.
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
It's there in discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The, the motion will move to its third and final reading at the next council meeting. Item number fifteen is bill six-two-five-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri approving a street vacation plan for the easternmost portion of Bartold Avenue.
Motion to approve the bill. Second.
We have a motion. The second, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkman.
Yes.
Bill sixty-two fifty-one becomes ordinance number sixty forty-five.
Item number sixteen is old business. Is there any old business to do? Item number seventeen is council communications.
I would just like to say once again, welcome to our scout friends. As already knows, I'm sort of particular to scouts. I know that from but St. Andrews, just our neighbors, just down the road, so welcome. And I hope you've learned what it is for citizenship and the dot-dot-dot merit badge.
Community, as a community, okay.
Any other council communications? Next item, night eighteen is the mayor's report. The only thing I have to report right now is that I had a visit from Chad Harthold, who's the the developer for the medical conception project, and we sat on my front porch for an hour and a half and discussed the project and, and I was able to give him additional information. He will be coming back to the next meeting. He wasn't aware there's a miscommunication, I think internally on, in his organization. So I think he's going to be coming back unless he decides not to to have a further discussion with, in presentation with regards to the use of the medically conception education building. Item number nineteen is the city attorney's report.
I have nothing this evening.
Item number twenty is the city manager's report.
I have nothing this evening apart from the budget, so thank you for giving me ample time to work on that for you.
And item number twenty-one is another opportunity for members of the public to address the council in public forum. Is there anyone that, yes, please step up.
We're going to put you in a spot.
I'll be right.
You can do it.
Sure. So several things. Press the button on the microphone. State your name and address.
I think I hear the say of the city that you live in.
My name is Thomas Kirby of St. Louis.
And you have a comment for us, a question?
Um, I would just like to know what is being done to prevent small crimes that impact our environment in a big way, like littering.
Who wants to handle that? Who wants to handle that?
So a couple of things about littering. We have an excellent police department that I'm sure is out there watching us. We also have a great. Public Works Department that picks up litter as it happens, but I don't know, we've never, we've never taken on the lady issue of littering, but that's important. Sky is clean.
I would say when I moved to Maplewood about five, six years ago, one of the things that really impressed me was that there were so many trash and recycling. Receptacles in very commonly walked areas. Good thing that lid was on. So I think that really helped proactively reduce the opportunity if people can go, oh, there's a trash can right there. You know, he's going to give me a look if I just dropped this on the sidewalk.
I think it has a lot to say about the pride that we have in our community. That we want to take care of it and so. It's always the people from out of, you know, out of town that literally made none of us. Do you have any other question or does anyone else want to address them? Do you have any other questions for us?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address city council? I hope you got a badge for that one because. Because that took a lot of courage to do that. If there's no other items for the public forum, is there a need to have a closed session?
There's nothing.
There's not. And. There is no closed session, full council needed. So I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned.